All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
All right, let's move this up. All right, thank you for everybody for being here. Meeting has come to order at 5:32. We're going to move into our, oh, do I want to make a motion to excuse Brittany and Mike first, right away? Okay. I'll entertain a motion, and since we have Gabe online on the phone and we have Mike here, or I mean Josh here, so I'll entertain a motion to excuse Brittany and to excuse Mike again.
Second the motion.
No, you make the motion.
Oh, yes, I'll make the motion to excuse Mike Connors and Brittany Gliddon and to have Gabe on the phone.
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up, we have communications from parents, staff, and district residents. I have something that I need to read, so I'll try to get through this quickly. Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community at regular board business meetings. The Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parents, staff, and district residents. At this time, it is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided, as the goal is to listen and to learn. Please know that the Board's silence is neutral, is neither a signal of agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember that your words have impact, and you and not the school district are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it is possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, you should seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks like and sounds like. All right. Sure. Is there anybody online? No one? Okay. All right, it looks like we have a number of speakers today, so reminder there is two minutes. And the first speaker up is Emma M.
My name's Emma, and I yield my minutes to Sheila Smith.
Okay, and Sheila Smith is our second speaker. So Sheila Smith.
Okay, hi, my name is Sheila Smith. I'm the head girls' track and field coach at Southridge High School, and my husband and I just finished our 30th year coaching and coaching the youth in our community. We are both scholarship athletes at Washington State University. Our daughter graduated from Southridge in 2022, where she competed as a three-sport athlete and won the state title in the high jump her senior year. Her best high jump in high school was five feet, six inches, and she was good enough to be a state champion and to earn a Division One scholarship to Montana State. While five foot, six inches is a great jump for a high school girl, it ranks number 385 on the boys' list for the state of Washington in all classifications for this past season, and I just looked that up this morning. So this means that a male athlete ranked 385 on the boys' list could show up at the state meet and win the girls' title. Please let that sink in. A JV boy can become a state champion in the girls' division simply by identifying as a female. That could have happened to my daughter. The reality is that an average male athlete could win almost any event in the girls' division at the state level. Right here in Kennewick, our best male athletes ranked number one in every single one of the girls' track and field events at the state level, and in most events would rank number one in the United States of America among girls. That's just our Kennewick boys. The only exception would be when there's a longer race, or higher hurdles, or a throwing event using a heavier implement. In the sport of track and field, we use a data collection platform called athletic.net. I would invite anyone to use it to compare males versus females, the data at the local, state, and national level. It is eye-opening, and many of my colleagues in the room right now have spent hours upon hours studying this real data, and that's why we're here today. In every single event in track and field from the local level to the national level, the males clearly dominate the females, and the data proves it. There is a transgender athlete that won the girls' 2A 400 meter at state this year. That athlete would rank number eight on Kamaiakin's track team. This athlete contributed points in the 400, as well as the 4x400 relay, and as a result, East Valley of Spokane won the team title. We were at the Junior Olympics track meet this past weekend, and we saw a huge difference between 13-year-old boys and 14-year-old boys simply because of going through puberty. It was unbelievable to watch the difference of what happens in that year, so testosterone is a very powerful hormone. When our girls are expected to compete against boys, it is degrading and humiliating, especially when they're told just to try harder. Try harder at what? Being a boy? The top boy high jumper in our state jumped six feet, 11 inches in the high jump. That would be a new world record for the women. In closing, I want to address the concept of D E I when it comes to sports. Diversity, yes, but equity, absolutely not. Inclusion, yes, for some, but unfortunately, that inclusion for transgender females can mean exclusion for those that were born female, as they get left at home from track meets, left off of podiums, and left empty-handed with no medal. Does that say, oh, no. Okay. For the record, I am in favor of including transgender athletes and allowing all youth to be able to compete, but not at the expense of our biological girls. It's not that hard to create a separate division in track and field. We're already doing that with our wheelchair and ambulatory athletes. If we do, sorry, continue allowing transgender athletes to compete in the girls' division, we will have D I E, diversity, inequality, and exclusion for our girls. And this is where Title IX comes in, and where girls' sports will unfortunately D I E die. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Dustin Smith.
I've been a coach here in Kennewick for 30 years, coaching track, and I'm going to take a focus here on a throwing event that a lot of people don't know much about, but I've been doing it 30 years. And well, I'd like to back up. My position on transgender females competing against females is 100% unfair to female sports, and if we continue to allow, the damages will be irreversible. And I think it starts here in Kennewick. I want to give an example using the shot put. So every year for the past 30 years, I have had a 40-foot male shot putter, with the exception of one. So that's 29 of 30 years I've had a 40-foot male shot putter. The boys throw a 12-pound shot put, and the girls throw an 8.8-pound shot put. It's about 25% heavier for the boys. I had a boy this year that was not my best, but he's just a 40-footer. I've had those every year. I had three this year. And if that translates into the girl's weight, he can throw that 50 feet, which, I'm going to give you some stats here this year. The 4A winner threw 44 feet, 10 inches. The 3A winner threw 43 feet, 5 and 1/4 inch, and the 2A winner, for the girls, threw 39 feet, 7 and 1/2 inches. And that's with the 4-kilo shot. But again, if you take an average boy shot putter, which is 35 to 40 feet, that's very average, they throw close to 50, which year in and year out wins state titles and sets records for schools and makes a huge impact. My stand on this is it's simply not fair physically. Boys at birth and as through their development have a 30% more heart capacity, 30% more lung capacity, greater muscle density. All of those things contribute to the bigger, stronger athlete. And if you look at the World Games, females, transgender females were outlawed last year in March.
Okay. Next up is, I apologize if I get this name right, Cheryl Schabel.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Schabel. I am currently the women's track and field coach at Kamaiakin High School. I have been that for 42 years. 43 years ago, though, I was an athlete at WSU in track and field. We also had a pivotal happening. Sports took a great step ahead for ensuring women's athletics would be treated equally fair and without harassment. Title IX was in place to protect each of us. Now we are under attack again, allowing transgender athletes to declare their protections under this same law. No law was placed to allow one group to be afforded this while denouncing another, in this case, women and girls in their sport. There is participation rights, but not while denying another group this same right. Girls, women, and boys and men should be placed in their proper category. I'm speaking mainly about track and field because we have separate races for boys and separate races for girls because of the science, the biology, and all of those things. We are seeing that more of these athletes are participating and denying girls in those same events, leaving them home, not able to participate. There's a reason track and field is the number-one sport where this is happening, because they're allowing it all across the United States. Biologically, compete in the fine, but not altered. Follow the science. It's destroying girls' and women's athletics and running. It's not safe, and it's violating girls' rights to play. Coaches are leaving our profession because of this. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Carol Noakes. Did I get that right?
It's Kara.
Oh, Kara, okay.
My name is Kara Noakes. I'm a chef, local business owner, former student of this district, and parent to four children in this district. But most importantly to tonight's conversation, I am a trans woman. You don't get to have trans debates without trans voices anymore. I find it hilarious that we once again find ourselves in a position with zealous school board members attempting to defy state's position and rules, which will only affect an already marginalized and at-risk population they have been voted in to protect, and it worked so well the last time. It's because people like those that are attempting to be, that I was scared to be myself until I was already an adult. Bullies like that have their minds made up, so I wanted to speak to any of the trans and queer youth in the audience that you are trying to keep scared and quiet. There are more of you than they want you to know. There are more, there are more of you than there are of them. Use your voice. Do not let them take you out of the conversation. Together, you are louder, stronger, and braver than they will ever be. Make it known, work together, demand your rights.
Lisa Pepperd.
Good evening. Regarding Resolution 10, I feel like I could just copy and paste my remarks to this board for so many other proposed policies, procedures, and resolutions. This feels very familiar, from flag policies to CRT to resolutions opposing state bills. And just as before, I'm not really worried about a resolution in and of itself. It holds no power, but I will say again that I am here to stand up for the people who don't have the ears of some board members. I'm here to tell those people that they have my and so many others' support. The thing is, I don't even understand the breadth of this issue. Do you? Do we even have transgender athletes in our district? Do you understand the legal issues around transgender athletes and Title IX? I encourage this board to get fully informed about their role and the WIAA rules, and I certainly hope we will be hearing from Bronson before you vote. As I did some research, I came across an article that I thought was very good at portraying the complexity of this issue. And I especially liked this quote from the Republican governor of Utah, Spencer Cox, after he vetoed a transgender sports ban because, among other things, his state had only four transgender athletes among 85,000 school kids. He said, "Four kids who are just trying to find some friends and feel like they are part of something. Four kids trying to get through each day. Rarely has so much fear and anger been directed at so few." I expect there are board members who drafted this resolution whose minds won't be changed by anything said here tonight. I am appealing to you to quit targeting the LGBTQIA+ students in this district, and I hope if you are on the fence about this resolution that you will vote no.
Caitlin Schroder? Catherine, sorry.
Good evening. I'd like to speak on Resolution 10. Unfortunately, once again, board members are proposing a resolution that would position Kennewick School District in opposition to state rules and regulations and would put the district at risk for costly lawsuits for discrimination. The resolution positions the district to discriminate against a most vulnerable group of students and set up transgender student athletes as objects of fear-mongering, making mockery of the Board's obligation to support the success of all students. The Board misses an opportunity to acknowledge and affirm our transgender student athletes as loved and valued members of their school and community, and who have the right to an equal opportunity to engage in school sports with their classmates. This resolution degrades the image and reputation of Kennewick School District and the city of Kennewick as a community that is unwelcoming and discriminatory. When drafting this resolution, did the board members gather input from student athletes, including transgender athletes, from their parents, district staff, administrators? Did board members complete exhaustive research into recommendations and best practices of Washington State, national, and international athletic organizations, and respected medical professionals, and prominent LGBTQ and ally organizations? If not, I urge the Board to withdraw this resolution and to respectfully go home and do your homework.
Cindy Olson is next.
Hi, my name is Cindy Olson, and I have been an athlete all my life. My daughter ran, my son ran. I've been around the athletes and see how hard they try. And no, I have a lot of friends who run, and I never can keep up with the men, ever. I don't have a problem with the transgender competing, but I just feel that if they want to compete, they should have a separate category for transgender athletes, and I think if they did that, maybe more of them would turn out. I'm feeling, it could be complicated, but it's fairness in competition, as we talked about before, and the physical advantages associated with the biological sex, such as muscle mass and bone density, can affect performance in sports, and a separate category could help with these differences. I just feel it's totally unfair, as a woman, to have to compete against a man. I do rock climbing, I do hiking, and all those things, and the men, no matter how hard I train, they're always better and faster and stronger than me. And that's just the way it is. And so if they want to compete, I think we should just make a separate category for them and support them in their athletics. Thank you.
Next up is Mary Jo Wilkins.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about Resolution 10, and I'm here surprised. I don't know if you are aware how common intersex anomalies are. About 1.7% to 2% of the population are born with indistinguishable or confused genitalia. That's the normal population outside of transgenderism. What I feel like I'm hearing here today is that overall feeling sounds like people become transgender simply to compete, and I don't think that's the issue at hand when it comes to athletics and children. If you go to AmericanProgress.org, read their article, Fair Play, they talk about average people that have attempted suicide. CIS people, normal people that identify with their gender that they were born with, have about a 7% chance of attempted suicide. Transgenders, however, have about 30% chance of suicide. Same thing when it comes to being bullied at school. CIS gender people have about a 23% chance of being bullied. Transgenders have a 50% chance of being bullied. When it comes to being threatened or injured at school, it's even worse. 7% of this population have that happen. Almost 28% of the transgender population have that happen. However, the population in athletics lowers those ratios so that these children have better self-esteem and people understand them better. The non-athlete with severe psychological distress is about 37%. The athlete's about 28%. Suicidal behavior in the non-athlete, closer to 60%. The athlete is closer to 46%. And this is an article all about transgender youth. I urge you to really do your research. This statement comes across as simply not supporting transgender youth at all in our schools, and I don't think that's the message we've been working to, to explain to our children in schools. Thank you.
Next up is Cedro Rodriguez.
Hey there, yeah, Cedro Rodriguez here. You know, I'm a father of six daughters. I didn't really prepare anything. I think I probably should have, because it's crazy how, you know, we feel like we could just send our kids to school and everything's good, right? And they don't have any problems, don't have any bullying every once in a while. This is an emotionally-driven issue here that really shouldn't be, because I think there's a much bigger agenda at play here that we really need to be open our eyes to. This is pitting us against each other. We all love each other. We're part of this community. We want to see everybody do good. There is nothing wrong with that, no matter who you are. But, you know, with my daughters, and I'm pretty sure any one of your children, there's risks that come into play, including what we've all heard for the sports, right? I have six daughters through the school, and they're so vulnerable. Girls in particular are more vulnerable, in my opinion, than boys. And when you have a boy enter over into that 4A, it changes everything. I've known girls to pull away from it altogether. I think this is a community that we can be proud of each other and promote each other's goodwill, push each other in sports in the best possible way possible. And I don't think that, I've heard, let's create a new category. That might be the way it goes. But to have a young girl have her privacy at a young age through sports is so important. It's important for them. It's what they deserve. Boys, the same, no less. I remember being a young boy in a locker room, and I was embarrassed to have other boys around, okay? So I just, I thought that it was important that I show up and show my concern, that the Kennewick School District do what's right for everybody, which I think at this point in time speaks to say that we should leave things kind of how they are. I don't think this is a confusing issue. I think that we should have boys be with boys, girls be with girls, and if another category needs to be created, so be it. But honestly, I'm selfish in this matter, and I'm concerned about my girls. So thank you very much.
Next up is Elena Gambora. Did I get that right?
Gambora.
Gambora.
Hello, guys. So we are here today again. We sound like a broken record to talk about the after-school program at Fuerza Elementary. First of all, I want to start by thanking this board and Ms. Linda Stevenson, board member with School District 123, for, I think, guiding us between whomever you guys have forwarded our emails to and listened to us. I think everyone is now in one email chain and trying to get things done. But we need one last thing before we actually get to work, and so we're here to, once again, ask for help. So I think we have figured out between both of the districts and the parents what everyone needs to do. What we need from Kennewick School District is approval for ESD 123 to operate out of Fuerza Elementary and to give us a green light to start fundraising through the PTO. We understand that there's legalities that we may not know of, of what that entails, and so we just want to know, yes, you guys can start fundraising, or no, you may never fundraise because of legality, so that we leave you guys alone. Again, you know, we, I think, have voiced how important this program is for our little school community, and so any support you can give us, and/or guidance, and yay, you guys have the green light, or no, you do not, and never will, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Elena, that is an answer. We can get you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, gosh. Joe and Farie Webb? Farry Webb? Joe, I guess you do have something to say.
I thought I was just signing in. But I have to stand up here anyway, and obviously had nothing prepared, so I was just speaking off the cuff. I am glad to be able to be here. This is something I'm passionate about. I want everybody to know that we are all children of our Heavenly Father. That's the first and foremost that we need to realize. We need to love each other. We are children of a glorious, wonderful Heavenly Father who loves us. I have family members who have transgender, or I shouldn't say transgender, but, you know, who are gay, are lesbian. I love them. I consider them family. I love them as if they were my own brother, sister. But at the same time, I love my children, and I want the best for them. My daughter's here with me. She's here to support. She's here to stand up to say, you know what? I want what's fair. I want to be, you know, I want what's fair for me as an athlete. And for her to be able to go out there and compete with people that are of her same gender, that are genetically equal to her, that is what we want, is something that it's fair for everyone. And because of that, we want to just show our support to the community. We want to let those that maybe have difference of opinions know that we love you, we support you, we want the best for you, but at the same time, we also want some love and support for our children. And I thank you for your time.
Next up is Sherry Schroder.
I also thought I was only signing in. But that won't stop me from offering a few thoughts as well. Not only are girls denied opportunities for scholarships and success in sports when they have to compete against biological boys, there are documented instances across the country and around the world of injuries in sports with boys, especially in basketball and volleyball, are the two sports that I've seen instances of. To say that I don't think that biological boys should compete with biological girls does not mean that I hate boys who have a different view of themselves. does not mean that I hate boys who have a different view of themselves in the world, or a different view of girls and the way they see themselves in the world. To be equal, to have equal opportunity does not mean that we are all the same. Equality is not sameness. It's a, I believe, a mistake that began to come into play in the United States with the women's movement, when women said they wanted to do what men had the opportunity to do, and they set out to be better men than the men were. And it's not the same. We're not the same, we're never going to be the same. And it doesn't mean that we have to hate each other. There are kids who are being bullied, if there are kids who are suicidal, that's a failure for everyone. That doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how they see themselves or how they see their neighbors. That's not allowed anywhere, and we shouldn't tolerate or excuse any of that kind of behavior. And, there we go. Thanks.
Next up is Kiana.
It's Kiana.
Oh, Kiano. Okay, thank you. Okay, last name?
Daus, D-A-O-U-S.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Kiana Daus. You can call me Coach K. I'm the new cross-country and track coach at Southridge High School. I have the opportunity of working with 18 young women, and they've been putting in a lot of, let me backtrack a little bit. I've been running for about nine years. I ran collegiately in college. I competed on a scholarship where I achieved academic All-American four years in a row, and I've had the opportunity to be coaching for two years. Over the last month, seeing the cross-country girls come out every single day and just pour their hearts and souls out into something that they love and that they're very passionate about is awesome, is very motivating. With that being said, being able to have males compete against women is just completely unfair. I've been running for a total of 12 years, and never have I before seen a female athlete beat a male athlete in a fair race. So to take that away from them is very discouraging, and it is completely unfair.
Next up is Colby Lundstrom.
I wish to sign in.
Colby seems to be the, would you like to say anything, though?
No.
No? Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody signing in. Dave and Louis Whitmarsh?
Just signing in.
Laurie Whitmarsh?
Everything's already been said, but I'm not going to say anything else.
Okay. And our last speaker would be Kyle Coleman. I thought you were going to tell me just signing in.
No, I meant to be here. Yes, I did mean to be here. I have not spoken publicly for 25 years. So to show up, I hope that you recognize that it means something to me. I have three daughters. They're older. They would not stand for this, so I'm representing them. You know, 50 years makes a difference. I was around when the Kinks sang a hit song, "Lola," about a man who had a romantic relationship with someone he thought was a woman, and he finds out he's a man. That was in 1970, and I let that go. That's fine. I liked the song. I've traveled all 50 states. I've been in most major cities in the entire United States, and I know that there's a place for everyone in this world. They can find it, they can find a place where they're accepted, and that includes transgender everybody. Every walk of life, I can find that in most medium to larger cities. Then recently, we find that people can permanently change their bodies to the sex that they prefer, and I let that go, too. Where I draw the line is when biological men push women out of their place, and that's what's happening. I'm sorry for 2% of the public that feels discriminated against, but I feel more sorry for 50% of the public that is discriminated against with policies like this that allow biological men to take the place of equally deserving women who have put in their time and effort to excel and succeed. And as a male, I don't have the right, I don't feel I have the right to take a spot from them. Thank you.
Just double check, still nobody online, Robin? Okay. So with that, that will conclude that portion of the meeting. Yeah, I'll take a motion for that in a minute. And then, so I guess next up is the approval of the consent item, so I'll take a motion. And since we have Josh here, I don't know if everybody heard, we have Josh, we have Gabe on the phone, and we've excused Mike and Brittany today. So I guess, Josh, you're up again to?
Yeah, I can motion. Oh, Gabe's making.
Gabe, all right.
That way people know I'm still, that way people know I'm still here. I move to approve the consent items as written.
Okay, thank you. And I will take a roll call, a roll call vote.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Communications and Follow-Up.
So just the only thing I wanted to mention since our Speaker Elena was here previously, and we've been corresponding about the after-school program. Alyssa St. Hilaire, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, has been taking the lead on that, and we will follow up on the questions that you raised. Right, yeah.
Yes, I just want to thank the leaders.
Yes, and Elena, you know, you, obviously you guys know each other, so you can make that connection. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, proceeding on. We're going to the Superintendent and Board Member Reports. We do not have a student rep here today, but...
No, but later in the meeting, we will, the board will be formally approving the rep from next Sunday. Did you want to move things up now?
Yes, yeah.
And then do this later?
Yeah, just so everybody, so I know everybody's here for something, and so, and stick around. We are going to, we're going to move up our resolution, and it's at the end. We're going to move it up forward if we have a motion to do that.
Yeah, you can move it before these items.
I will go ahead and make a motion to move up Resolution Number 10, 2023, 2024, Title IX Regulations Supporting Fairness in Competition and Student Safety, to move it up prior to the public hearing.
And the reports. Because I do have a little report.
And Board Member, Superintendent Board Member Report.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so we'll have a report, and then we'll have the resolution.
So I made that motion. Do we need to take a vote?
Oh, yeah. I think we do. Yeah, I'll take a roll call vote for that, Patty.
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we'll jump right to that, correct?
Want to jump right, okay, yep, I guess we'll jump right to that. And so we'll do that, and then we'll do our Board Member Reports.
Okay. So what I've done for the board is bring the resolution up on the screen, and I think I'll just hand it right over to President Galbraith to talk through. I think the two things I would just maybe lead off with is, as with other, you know, resolutions, resolutions are, they're not policies, they're procedures. And so, as the resolution states, and I'm happy to highlight any of these things for the board, but the board delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of athletics to the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, or WIAA. And that's a resolution that the board passes every year, and so the district's obligated and does follow the WIAA rules that are established and those policies and procedures. So I just want to highlight that piece, along with the fact that is reflected in some of the WHEREAS clauses, that the U.S. Department of Ed has released Title IX Regulations. I mean, they're, they're taking effect August 1st, but they have not finalized rulemaking as it pertains to athletics. So there's still some information forthcoming from the Department of Ed that would then pertain to WIAA's rules around regulating athletics in our state. So I don't know if there's anything else, just technical, that you want me to share, but with that, I'll just hand it over to Gabe.
Yeah. Hi, Gabe.
Thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So to start, this, this, this resolution kind of took action about a month, six weeks ago, when a coach reached out to share some of their concerns in track. And thank you to, thank you to those coaches who shared their data tonight. Appreciate that. So that's, that's kind of how this resolution took its, took its legs and started. And then since then, it's already been mentioned tonight, we did have a male win a female track event, state title. Not only did that male win that state title, effectively beating the females, but with those points, it not only took away a title from one female, it took away team titles from another team. Those points effectively moved, I think, East Valley into first, and they took away a team title from another team of females. So, and so with that, I was going to share some of these data points that the coaches have already shared, so I'm not going to regurgitate those because I think those are well said. Basically, every, every male in the MCC would have set the state record in any female track events this year and won first. I think that's, that's already been said. What I do want to share, though, is the most recent Gallup poll in the nation shows that 70% of Americans believe that you should be, you should be playing in sports that match your gender at birth, not your gender identity. So look around the room, seven out of 10 people in that room would be the statistic for America for competing in sports in your own gender at birth. So I don't think this is that big of an issue for us to take on and say that we want fairness and safety in girls' sports. It was also mentioned, there's been multiple instances across the nation where young girls have been injured due to aggressive play of other males in those sports. I'd also like to share, too, just because I think it was put in question that we don't research anything, and so I'll just call out some research from a Dr. Brown and his report in December 2021. And the findings that he shares in his report specifically talk about, one, there are inherent physiological differences between men and women resulting in athletic advantages for males. Male athletic advantages exist even before puberty, and male athletic advantages exist even after testosterone suppression, were some of his major findings. So I think the data shows that when you have biological males competing against biological females, it's not anywhere close to being fair. It's not anywhere close to being competitive, and we need to protect female sports. Personally, as a father of multiple daughters who have played in sports, daughters who play at high levels in college, a wife who coached swimming, it is absolutely ludicrous that we are sitting here talking about having males in female sports. It should not be happening. It's not safe. It's unfair. And once we get through this, my hope is that we'll be able to affect change here locally at the state level by getting more boards to sign on and pass resolutions like this, so we can affect some change with the WIAA, whether that's an additional category or whatever it may be. But we need to stand up to ensure that our female athletes aren't injured, and they have a competitive playing field. So I think some would say that allowing men in women's sports is inclusive, but when men join women's teams, women's are excluded. And so that's all I have tonight. Hopefully, the board will pass this resolution, and we'll be able to effective, affect change in the state and protect our, our daughters and other females. Go ahead, Micah.
Thank you, Gabe. Josh, do you have any comments? Yeah, sure. So a couple of comments. One, to the concerns about legality, those kind of questions, this is a resolution. Unfortunately, this is not a law. We don't have power to make law. That would come from your state representatives. And I would strongly encourage all of you, particularly those of you who spoke today that would like to see greater equity and protection for our females, to reach out to our state representatives and let them know where you stand, and let them know that our state needs to protect our women and our girls in their sports, because they have the ability to make law. And unfortunately, our resolution is an effort to show those legislative bodies where we, as a school district and school board, stand in wanting to protect our women and protect the integrity of their sports. I also want to say thank you to all of our coaches. We had multiple coaches here coming up and expressing their concerns. These are people who dedicate hours and hours of their time to help our young people achieve their goals and their dreams and their aspirations in terms of athletics, and I really appreciate having, having four kids of my own. I appreciate your dedication, your hard work, and your concern, because I think you see firsthand how detrimental it could be if, if, if men are allowed to compete against women and, as was mentioned, basically take their spots, break their records, basically undoing a lot of what Title IX had sought to do 40-plus years ago. In addition, you know, I appreciate the comments about research because I love that. It's great. Yes, we did our research. I hope you do, too. Please dive into the research. You'll find that it is physiologically nowhere close the same between men and women, as was expressed about lung capacity, heart, the cardiac volume. We can go on. I'm an orthopedic sports surgeon. I spend a lot of time in the realm of sports, and I can tell you, the research is pretty clear. It is not, it is, it is not anywhere close to fair. And you're seeing a lot of the larger bodies, athletic bodies throughout the world, starting to recognize how unfair it is and how inequitable it is. Now, to be clear, I am not saying that I don't, this is not a condemnation or a, in any way saying that trans athletes shouldn't be allowed to participate in sports. I think, great, everyone, I encourage all those who are interested in sports to participate in sports, but I think we need to make sure and protect the integrity of female sports. I think we can look to, there's a couple of very striking examples. The U.S. Women's National Soccer Team that went on to win the World Cup competed against both the under-15 Dallas team as well as an under-15 Bear Munich team, boys team. So these are boys that are under the age of 15, and they lost to both of them in scrimmages. Now, it's not a condemnation, that's not saying anything about the women. It's showing you the difference between men and women. It's not a fair game. I believe it was Serena Williams played against a distant ranked tennis, men's tennis player and was handily beaten. This is one of the greatest tennis players of all time, female tennis players. And again, it's not fair. It is, there are biological differences, and to me, I want my girls to be celebrated in their achievements. I want women to be celebrated in their achievements, in their abilities, and let's compare apples to apples. Let's make sure that we're comparing equal things, and it is just not fair. From a physiologic perspective, and that's what this is about, is trying to maintain the integrity of female sports. Women worked hard enough to have their female sports with Title IX. You know, I mean, we can go back to the 50s where they could say, hey, you know, women can play, women can try out for basketball. We just have one basketball team. They can try out. Yeah, they could try out, but they would never be on the team because it's not fair. And that is the whole reason why a lot of the Title IX sports issues were brought up, was to provide an arena and an avenue that women would have the opportunity, the equal opportunity to participate. opportunity to participate in these things. So do I believe that there is a place, and do I believe that transgender athletes should certainly be encouraged to participate? Yes, but in the appropriate arena and in a fair arena that doesn't discriminate against women. I just can't, I'm sorry, I don't believe in discriminating against our girls and our women. So those are my thoughts. I appreciate everybody that came. And again, this is, you know, I think we need to maintain the scope of what we're talking about. This is not saying that, this is in no way, shape, or form saying that transgender athletes should not participate in sports. No one is saying that here. What we're saying is, is we want to maintain the integrity of women's sports by maintaining a place for women to participate. And in that narrow scope, that is what we're saying. That's all.
I'll just make a couple quick comments, and then we'll call for a vote or motion. I'm not, I don't, when I hear things that we are against things, I just, I don't really relate to that because I don't feel like I'm against anything. I think you can't, you don't have to be against something to be for something else. And I mean, I've said a lot of times, I have two gay brothers, I love them. It's not against anybody or anything or any group. It's for women. It's for women, to support women. We all, I was really grateful for the comments that spoke about love, that spoke about community, that spoke about acceptance, and I believe that. I think our board believes that, and that is a really important element of this. We have, I mean, we have researched and researched and had discussions and phone calls with people from all across the state. I don't think anybody can even imagine the amount of time that goes into these kind of things. It's a lot. My biggest, one of my biggest issues is, yes, the safety, but one of my biggest issues is locker rooms. The locker rooms, I just can't get past. My four daughters, again, I mean, it was said that, you know, even, you know, boys who are, you know, in a locker room with a bunch of boys, you know, I can relate to that. And when you're growing and going through puberty, and there's a lot of things happening to your body, it's awkward. And now if you were a girl that had a boy, a biological male, in that locker room, I just, I just can't even believe that that's even a conversation. It's hard to even imagine this conversation. Now, that is not against anybody. That is for the girls in that locker room who are feeling extremely uncomfortable and are, in some cases, being forced to see things that they really have no business of seeing at that, at this moment. Boys, you know, boys and girls are not identical. Boys get testosterone every 15, 20 minutes, and they convert testosterone, they convert that into estrogen. Women get a lot more, women get these hormones once a month, you know? It's just not even the same world. They're not the same. And so to try to push that, it's not right, and it's not safe. It's not safe. I mean, I know a soccer player in our district, a girl soccer player this year who broke her, who tore her ACL playing against boys in preseason. And that was really sad because she was a great player, and I don't know what's going to happen with her college now. I actually believe that there should be two categories. I think there should be an open, and I think there should be a women's. And that's how I would handle it. And so I would love for our lawmakers to consider that idea. I hope that whatever happens to this resolution, that boards across the state take notice, they stand up, they push what they believe is right, and I hope that we can make change in this situation. So I think that's what I have to say. Again, I just want to make the point, it's not against anybody. It's not against anybody. And please, if you don't agree with me, please at least honestly listen to the words I'm saying. Don't, it's not fair that I can say a word and then you shake your head at me, right? Because I'm telling you how I feel. It is not against anybody. It's not about, it is protecting biological women. That's what it is. And with that, you have my time, and I will take.
Micah?
Yes, Gabe.
Hey, I just want to be very, I want to be very clear that based on the outcome of this resolution, I would like to get it out to every school board in the state, asking them to support it and help get on board with making change with our legislators and WIAA. So I just want to be very clear. So that's out in the open, that I will be, if this is passed, I will be sharing it with all the other school boards in the state, hoping that they sign on to help change legislation.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion, Gabe, Josh? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
All motion.
Okay, Gabe.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1020232024, Title IX Regulations Supporting Fairness in Competition and Student Safety, as written.
Okay. Is there any discussion, any additional discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passed, or the resolution passes as written. Okay, we will now proceed to our superintendent and board member reports. This is where the board gets, the superintendent gets a chance to address what's happened this week and the last couple of weeks, so we'll take that.
Thank you for all those that did show up today to express your opinions on both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Don't forget, the budget's coming up.
Okay, well, I have just a few brief things to share. It has been a really busy time since our last board business meeting, which was on May 22nd. So as we wrapped up the school year, I had the good pleasure of visiting Quersa Elementary, Legacy, and Endeavor High Schools, Tri-Tech Skill Center, our Key Wade and Discovery Center preschool, a couple different classrooms at Westgate, also Park Middle School, and JJC, the school we run through, the Juvenile Justice Center. So lots of busy activities in our schools. Wanted to highlight just a few events that happened as the year came to a close. We had the WSU Teaching Bridge Program Signing Day for all the students who've gone through our teaching academy and are now signing on to go into teacher preparation programs and getting that ongoing support through a partnership that we have with WSU and their Teaching Bridge Program. A couple weeks before school ended, there was a junior achievement financial literacy simulation. A couple board members were able to come to that. It was held here at the district office. Park Middle School students came, and it was a great financial literacy learning opportunity for those students. Southeast Washington Association of School Administrators Award Ceremony was held. Each year, we get to honor a community member with a Community Leadership Award. Steve Howland, the executive director of the MCA of the Greater Tri-Cities, was our awardee this year, so we were happy to honor him. Also, this year, we honored Ashwin Joshi, not at the reception. We're actually going to honor him at a board meeting, and originally, that was going to be tonight, but Ashwin is traveling with his family, so we have rescheduled that, and we'll be honoring him at the August board meeting, and he will be here to receive his Student Leadership Award plaque. We also held the semi-annual board retreat. As the board knows, all of the graduation ceremonies, because you were there, we had the last day of school, which was, of course, exciting. And then yesterday, we had our end-of-year leadership meeting where we bring in leadership team for some reflection and celebration and looking ahead to next year. And so just on that note, as I wrap up, I wanted to really say a big thank you to our whole KSD leadership team and to the cabinet team. And not all of the cabinet team is here tonight because people have started on vacations, but I just want to thank them for the incredible work that's been accomplished this year tied to our goals as a district. And our district's really fortunate to have outstanding leaders who really care about students and about improving teaching and learning and outcomes for students. And the work that we do as leaders ultimately connects back to our overall mission and vision for our students. So I just wanted to say a public thank you to the team for a really strong year.
Thank you. All right. Gabe, would you like to go first? Would you like to start this?
Yeah, I'll start. So obviously, of course, attending graduations, that's one of the funnest events of the year. Ending the year and passing out some thousand or so diplomas is always fun, and seeing the kids with a smile on their face is great. It's also a good time to, you know, we get to be around staff and board members and chat and just learn more about each other, so that's always good. Went to quite a few graduation parties, knew a lot of students graduating this year, so excited for them and what they have planned. Met with a gentleman who has programs regarding basically boosting culture in schools and really trying to help define what that is. Had a great conversation with him about his program. It's very, very neat. Excited for him to meet with the staff and share his information with them and see if it's something that KSD could take part in. And then lastly, to just to echo Dr. Pierce, you know, thank you to the staff, the admin, everyone for a great year. I know you guys are working hard every day for our students, and so just reiterate, thank you for that. And rest up. School starts in about seven weeks.
Already counting down.
All right. Is that it, Gabe?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Josh?
Yeah, so it's been busy. To echo graduations, also a lot of, several schools had end-of-the-year celebrations or family nights or different awards nights I was able to attend. Graduation, as was mentioned, was a lot of fun. I've had several discussions, had several discussions about actually the resolution as well with some different members of the community voicing their concerns with regards to that. So yeah, some of that, you know, a couple things, like I've mentioned in the past, my report time, I think I'd like to use less for a travelogue of what I've been doing and more for kind of some of the kind of improved transparency and let people know what I'm thinking and what are the issues that are on my mind. Certainly, first of all, I want to mention that while often we as a board, when people come and present, we ask very critical questions and often may seem very critical of everything that's going on and issues of concern, for example, graduation rates, or how many people are going to college, or different individual programs. But I want them, the staff, to know how much we appreciate. I think things are, the district is doing well. We are doing very well, and things are going very well. Our job as a board is to ask those critical questions and to be probing and trying to see how we can improve. So I hope that as we ask those critical questions, please take that, you know, with the understanding that we think you're doing a wonderful job. You're doing great. Keep going, but we're kind of wanting to constantly improve, and improvement comes through challenging ourselves and saying, hey, how can we do better? And so I want to make sure that the staff knows how much we appreciate them. The final thing I wanted to mention, just because I've, you know, in the past, we have said, you know, I've voiced concerns particularly about getting kids ready for graduation and counseling and how we can improve getting kids ready for their future after graduation. Because as I saw those thousands of, literally over 1,000 kids, I think, come across the stage, the question I wish I could have asked each one of those kids is, so what next? Because really, that's where we show whether we were successful at what we did, is if they have a plan of where to go from here and are moving forward with their lives to do wonderful and productive things and really using the education they had to move forward with their lives in a productive way. And so, you know, I had an experience of, in the past month, of working with one of the counselors who has done a wonderful job in helping, in one of the students I know, in helping direct them, not just in their plans now with school, but also looking to the future. And so I appreciate as our teachers and our staff and our counselors are doing that in really helping our students not just look at graduation, but look beyond, saying, what comes next and how will I be ready for what comes next? Because that is really the point of what we're trying to do, is prepare them for that. So that's been on my mind.
Thank you. Lots of graduations, great special time of year. I also went to the Financial Literacy, I think Brittany did as well. Fantastic seeing the kids work on budgets and work on how to buy insurance and how to pay for their car and all this kind of stuff. It's really a cool program. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but it's really neat. They have a simulation, they get a certain amount of money, they work through all these workshops, and they're spending their money. And anyway, it's really fun watching the kids work through it, and then I think they get a little appreciation for their parents sometimes. I think they probably did. I actually had a, you know, I presented something in our study session. I had a teacher reach out to me who, you know, wanted to talk, and so I met with this teacher, had a fantastic conversation. We spent about an hour and a half. When we were done, and we got up and we started walking off, and we didn't totally agree on everything. And I know that there are certain people in this audience who I've done this with as well. All right? And, you know, there was a veteran that was sitting next to us, and he said, you know, before you guys leave, I just want to say, like, I really, I sat here and I listened to your entire conversation, and I really appreciated how you guys listened to each other, how you talked, how you discussed, how you, and it was really, it was a productive meeting. So anyway, we had a really nice talk with him, and that was really good to hear. Also met with, we have some culture things that I've been thinking about a lot, like Josh kind of said he wants to talk about going forward. I'm really concerned about the soul of our community and the culture in our schools and discipline and things like that. So we met with an expert about that kind of culture building, and we had a really nice meeting. It was Gabe, Tracy, and I. It was great. Met, I had some community events at Tumbleweeds, graduation parties, Sunset View Field Day. I've said many times, and I'll say it again, I really love Sunset View. It's one of my favorite elementary schools. It's fantastic. Speak with board members across the state, tons of research, thought, prayers, communication, interviews. Busy, 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 busy couple weeks. Special thanks also, I want to special thanks to Brittany, Mercer, Sarah, Alyssa, and Tony. And then we also have, we have a new student rep coming, and we're excited about that. So with that, that's my report, and I will. Yield my time, and I guess next we're going to the public hearing, yes? Okay.
Okay, so this evening, we'll be holding the public hearing and asking the board to adopt the budget for 2425. This is the culmination of many, many budget presentations that the board has received and Vic has presented on the budget all throughout the spring. This is absolutely tied to our goal to be innovative, proactive, and accountable, including being very effective and efficient with our use of resources and being responsible stewards of those public resources. So the agenda for the public hearing is as follows. There'll be a staff presentation, a public comment period where people, and you don't have to sign up in advance, can speak for or against the budget, then board discussion and deliberation, and then board action. So with that, I will hand it back over to you, Mr. Valentine.
Okay, I'm supposed to read this. The public hearing on the proposed 2024-2025 budget for the Kenwick School District will now come to order. Everyone wishing to be heard for or against the proposed budget will be given an opportunity to speak at the conclusion of the presentation. For those attending the meeting remotely, the remote public comment signup form will now be open, so you can sign up and be called. now be open, so you can sign up and be called to speak following the presentation. At this time, I will ask Executive Director of Business Operations, there he is, Vic Roberts, to present the proposed 2024-25 budget.
All right, thank you for that. So as Dr. Pierce stated, the board spent a lot of time March through May. We don't have a lot of work-study sessions on the budget, but every board meeting seems like it is a work-study session. So their time learning about the budget and, and being knowledgeable is appreciated. So starting off here, the school district has, you know, six funds here. The self-insured fund is generally programs and that's part of the adoption budget process. Just looking back on a little history here, the levy failed and that did impact the, the last few years of the budget. We lost about $34 million. The levy passed in February 2023 and then we started collecting some money in 2020, 23, 24, about 12 and a half million of property taxes and 10 million or so of levy equalization. So not the full amount, that'll be in 2425, but we did get some money back from the approval of the levy. So enrollment, just 2324 budget was 18,430 and we're projecting 18,654. So that's up from the budget for this year. It's a little misleading as a lot of that increases from pass-through programs running a start and programs where the money is passed through to, you know, CBC and then in colleges that do those programs. The budget for 2324 is projected at 18,495, actually that's 2425. And, and then going down here, just a summary here of the proposed budget and the prior years, without the ESSR money, elementary and secondary school relief type funding for COVID. But that kind of gives us a little bit of an idea of where we were with the lost levy and the large amount of deficit that we were dealing with. And then for 2425, we're looking a little more manageable here. Revenue's 322 million and expenditure is 328 million. And again, the ESSR funding, we had 58.6 million and we've been spending that down and we'll, we'll spend all 58.6 million for these past four years. 2324, the majority of that money is still maintaining staff positions, funding some mental health, tutoring, summer school curriculum adoptions and IT related costs for this year. The 2425 budgets, again, the general fund, we're estimating a beginning fund balance of $50 million. And you see 322 million revenue, 328 expenditure. Placeholder for transferring money, Tri-Tech owes the Capital Projects Fund some money for some projects they're doing until their money comes in. And so that's put there as a placeholder in some of the other funds, ASP, Capital Projects, debt service, transportation vehicle, that's where the buses are purchased out of and our self-insured programs. Again, enrollment, you can see the preliminary budget here, 18,495. And again, the difference here, if you look at the 2425 budget versus the 2324 budget, overall it says 65 kids increase. But generally, like I said, most of that is from pass-through programs over here and the basic ed compared to budget year to budget year is about 90 kids less. But hopefully those are conservative numbers and will come in a lot higher. You can see 2324 projected basic ed is 16,593. We're budgeting 16,425. So that is a significant drop from the projection and also a drop from the prior year budget. But again, we've talked about enrollment and some of those things and some of the, the birth rates and some of that impact, but hopefully these numbers will turn out better than expected. The revenues, 2425, just by program here, some details, again, 322.5 million. You can see the ESSR money is eliminated, that will be all spent and collected, but generally 8.6 million over the budget from the prior year. And then some, some facts on wages and benefit staffing. Down here, we did reduce some staffing compared to the actual about 25 certificated positions. And then we did have to budget a few more special ed positions as that enrollment has been increasing and requires some more support there. The expenditures, 2425, again, 328 million. And you can see again, some ESSR money is, there's none budgeted and, and some of those programs through the list here we discussed, some of the larger ones here, special ed 41.2 million, so that is a big part of the budget. Some of the material supply and operating cost detailed out, total of 47.8 million. So that's a part of the, the budget with all those staff costs. And you can see above here, we have the local funded, the basic ed portion of the budget out of property taxes and, and basic ed funding. And then the bottom part is more the pass-through or categorical funding, your learning assistance, federal programs, funding that's more or less restricted to, to various programs, not as flexible in the use. So with the material supply, operating costs were required by the state to provide a chart that shows how much money we get from the state and how much we spend. And this year we were required to show the increase they gave us, that that money is going towards material supply operating cost. So we're estimating we're getting $400,000 based on a $21 per student FTE increase. And that money is going to go to support increased cost in utilities and liability insurance of over $900,000. And then the budget in summary, 2425, 322 million, expenditures 328 million. Revenues are not quite covering expenditures, about 5.5, 5 million. So we're balanced with the fund balance and we're projecting to have 42.4 million in fund balance at the end of next year. So if everything goes well, there's a good chance that this, this budget will end up break even next year if things are managed right and if a little bit more revenue comes in. That is the hope and that'll put the district in better position to get through the next few years. And here is a detail of the fund balance, here's how the 50 million is detailed out. We have to hold 2 million for the transfer at the end of this year. And then the reduction here, 50 million to 42.4 million is the change overall in the fund balance. So by law, we have to show a budget that has a four-year projections. And here's the general fund projections. And you can see the enrollment is basically decreasing and the, the pass-through programs enrollment is held steady. That's why you see the same number here each year that is not impacted by the pass-through programs. And just to note, the, the next levy is going to be voted on in 2026 for funding for 2627. And it's projected that we're going to need at least $40 million there, which is significantly higher than the 2425 budget of 23.2 million. And that is where the, the fund balance is very important to the district to keep that healthy. And if the fund balance does come in higher than expected, that will help mitigate the increase here in the levy, which at $2 is about 60 to 70 cents per thousand. The other funds, Capital Projects Fund, you can see here that the, most of the cost 2425 relates to Tri-Tech project, $45 million modernization project over the next few years. And we will be getting some money back on that, it's funded through the state through a grant, so that's budgeted up here. And then largely, there's a placeholder here, about $5 million contingency and also some smaller, excuse me, some smaller projects that are part of this, 8.5 million. Other funds, ASB Fund and Debt Service Fund. Excuse me there, I want to point out the Debt Service Fund, from the past meetings we've had with the board, we did add $500,000 here. And we have some bonds outstanding from 2015 that will come due to be refunded, you have to wait 10 years. And we feel there's significant savings if we refinance those bonds. And that, that will require some cost, bond issue cost for legal and bond counsel. Excuse me, so we did add 500,000 there that was not in the previous board meetings. Transportation Vehicle Fund, 1.8 million for 2425 to fund nine buses for delivery. And I have some water, but I think this is probably better. Thank you.
It's better water, yeah.
What do you, what do you got in this? So Transportation Fund, 1.8 million, that's going to fund nine buses for delivery in a, in a year. And then we're self-insured for workers' competence unemployment. The numbers do look, look a little bit daunting here, 1.8 million, 1.1 million dollar, you know, deficit, although we have $1 million of contingency just in case there's, you know, extraordinary, extraordinary amount of claims in workers' compensation or unemployment. But those programs are in good shape financially. And that is the presentation. Thank you.
If anyone in the audience would like to comment on the proposed 2024-2025 budget, please raise your hand and you'll be recognized at this time. You'll be asked to come forward to the podium and provide your comments. Please begin by standing, by stating your name to the record. Okay. Is there anyone attending, is there anyone who signed up remotely?
No.
Okay. Okay, last call for any persons who wishes to speak against or for the, the proposed Okay. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Okay. Do you need to vote for that, I guess?
Yes. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Leave now, I need to entertain a motion to adopt the budget, yes? So the motion to adopt the budget would be right there.
Through resolution.
What's that? Yeah. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I moved. I moved to approve the Kenwood School District budget for 2024-25 through resolution number nine. Sorry, that's all I see on the screen.
Yep. Is there, okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, real, real quick, Micah. One, I just want to thank Vic and his team. For many people there, or many may not know, it has been a terrible year for school districts and budgets throughout the state. I think I've shared this before, but we've got multiple, multiple districts laying teachers off. Moses Lake's like almost 200, Yakima's another 130 something, Seattle's closing 20 schools. There's one school on the west side that's been deemed financially insolvent, so the state's now taking over. And so I just, with that being said, I want to highlight Vic and his team, not just this year, but for the last couple of years, have really been keeping an eye on this and making sure that we're in a good place going forward. Even with the double levy failure, that was a tough pill to swallow, but it just, it serves as a reminder to how, I think how lucky we've been to have Vic and his team helping us through this, this time of, of tight budgets. And this being probably one of Vic's last presentations, I just want to thank you, Vic, for all your hard work and getting through this. And again, it just go, it goes to show too, that we're, we're not depending on the state to jump in with some, you know, here's extra money, they're just going to throw it at you kind of thing. We're, we're being fiscally responsible and I think it shows the community that we're being good stewards of their, of their money as well. The other thing, I just want to point out, it, it's interesting, but a fact, you know, we, we've done two resolutions this year that drew 50-plus comments, but here we are approving a 300-some million dollar budget and, and not one, not one comment on it. So, you know, going forward, I hope people will stick around and, and pay attention to the budget and help us make sure that we're continuing to be good stewards of money. So that's it. Thanks, Vic.
Yeah, I, I actually want to do the same. I want to echo, I mean, talking to the board members across the state, I mean, it is, it's doom and gloom. It's firing, it's letting, laying the people off, it's shutting down schools, it's consolidating schools, it is all the above, all, everywhere. But here we have this little firewall and I really think that we have, our financial team led by Vic, I think is the best, absolutely the best of the best. And I mean that bottom of my heart. I, I, again, I hope that when it, when the time comes to pass the next levy, I just hope and pray the community, and I hope everybody here in this audience can pound that drum and, and the, the job that's been done. And it's, and I, I wish I could take credit for it. I don't really think that I can take much credit for it. I just think that our team has been so, so, so good and, and I believe we've been very fiscally responsible with everybody's money. We've kept our taxes absolutely low as we possibly can and still been able to pass budgets. That's probably going to have to go up a little bit, but I just want to thank everybody and look Vic in the eyes and he's a humble man, but thank you.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. And I'd also like to express to the community, we, we know that some of the programs, some of the things that we, we benefited from the ESSR funds, unfortunately, we, we haven't been able to keep and we wish we could, the decisions that had to be made were challenging decisions, as has been expressed. It's the, the, the ESSR funding provided us a lot of, a lot of money that, that could be used in different avenues and different ways and provided a lot of benefit. And fortunately, that's going away and we've, we've had to make tough decisions. And, but I appreciate the fact that the decisions that have been made in the past and as well as now have been, been with a long-term perspective where we haven't had to lay off a bunch of people or haven't had to look at closing schools or make really dramatic.
Yeah, anybody.
Yeah. We have anybody for that matter. We have, yeah, and we haven't had to lay off people, we haven't had to take really dramatic measures. And I think again, that goes a lot, not to Vic, but also to the Dr. Pierce.
Sure.
To, to the entire cabinet who've, who've kept the, the, the long-term picture in mind, didn't get too excited with the money and start making, making moves that might have had really dramatic and negative impact. So thank you guys for, for that and, and for your leadership and for all that you've done. Again, I, you know, I'm sorry, we, we can't afford everything and we can't give everything everyone wants. I, I wish we could do everything, but we can't. And, and I appreciate your patience. I appreciate the community's patience and recognizing that there are some things that we had to let go.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, I believe it's time for a roll call vote, is it?
Yes. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. To me, that was a big moment. I, I feel like that deserves an applause, but okay. I guess that's not going to happen, but that, I hope that people realize how big that was. That was a big moment. I mean, thank you guys, yeah. Thank you. All right. The public hearing is over there. We'll go to the next part. Okay. All right. The next part of our meeting is reports and discussions. Student goal report, Alyssa St. Hilaire.
Yeah, good evening. Tracy's going to start us out.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Alyssa because Alyssa is presenting Matt's presentation tonight because Matt is on vacation. And then in turn, Matt will be presenting Alyssa's presentations at the August.
Actually, he did mine in May.
Oh, he did yours in May. Thank you. Okay. So that's, that's what we're doing here.
Yeah.
I also just wanted to highlight that this is one of our regular performance indicator reports, annual report, but this is the first time we're trying the format that was discussed at the board retreat. So keeping it a little more concise and, and focused, so we'll give it a whirl and see how it goes. The next two presentations that you'll see Alyssa give follow that format discussed at the board retreat.
Yeah, so this presentation right now is going to be our regular report during the year on student. on student athletic and activity participation. We've organized it this evening on what the performance target is, how we did in 23, 24, what we did to get those results, what we've learned, and then highlighting some bright step, spots and next steps. So this is connected to one of our strategic plan goals for students. We want to make sure that all of our students have access to diverse course offerings, activities and athletics. And we measure that in our performance indicators based off of, we want above 90% of middle school and high school students reporting that they have access to diverse course offerings, activities and athletics. This is done through student surveys and I'm going to share that in a minute. And we want to make sure that over the next four years, we're increasing that. Okay, so we're going to start out, let's see, with diverse course offerings and then later on we'll move into athletics and activities. So in our student survey that we have our students complete, we have a question that is, I have access to diverse course offerings, activities, athletics. And these are the results for the last three years, they're fairly consistent. Going on to the next slide, we can see it by grade from grade six all the way through grade 12. Again, you can see quite a bit of consistency there over the years. When it comes to, or I want to share some, what are the diverse course offerings? So we have a chart here in middle school and high school in the performing arts, the fine and visual arts, our technology or career and technical education courses, and then other electives that are available. The schedule in high school and the electives allows for a lot more of those opportunities and gives the chance for our students to also be, start to explore different passions, different career paths as well. So here's just a list, they are all in our course catalog as well. When it comes to thinking about offering new courses, we look at enrollment, we look at student interests, we also look at current workforce needs as well to make sure that we are preparing our students beyond high school. We also use our learner profile, if you look at that outside circle, we want to make sure that we are providing courses that have our students practicing employment skills, digital citizenship, social skills, those life skills. Next year, we will be offering some new courses in our CTE programs, digital electronics, mental health and counseling, and intro to healthcare. And these are, work was done this last year based on industry need and what we need in our community as far as careers go. In middle school, we've had some intentional registration in exploratory courses. Instead of just a rotation, we're making sure students are getting what they say they want to have in exploratory courses. So we're, we're pleased with those actions and we're eager to see what that brings us next year. I did want to share a little bright spot, we have 800 students right now over at Tri-Tech every day in summer school. They're getting credits, elective credits, CTE credits, art credits. They can take over 15 different classes in the summertime. It's an awesome summer program that's available to students and they can start exploring some different career options as well. So that's a little bit about our course offering, oh, yes.
Yeah, really quick, so from what I look at it here, it looks like we've got a pretty diverse course offering. We've got a lot of opportunity. We really haven't changed the dial much in terms of the student's perception. Because really, that's what we're assessing, right, is their perception. How, are we doing anything to maybe better educate them on their, changing their perception, right? Because I, I don't think, from what I'm seeing here, I don't think the issue is lack of, lack of, you know, lack of diverse course offerings. I think we, we're doing a great job with that. So maybe what we can look at is how we can let them know.
Yeah.
Change their perception, because that, I think, will more likely move the dial.
And I could speak to that slightly. We did have a CTE or Career Technical Education Program review this year that we surveyed students, staff and parents. And some of the feedback in the survey was not knowing which things were available until it was kind of too late. So our Director of Career and College Readiness is creating a catalog. You may have gotten one for Tri-Tech with how Tri-Tech offers courses. We're doing the same thing with career and technical education for next year, just so there's more awareness being mailed home of those courses.
The other thing I just wanted to comment on is the question, the survey question lumps together, diverse course offerings, athletics and activities. So one thing also we've like considered is potentially we should separate those into three different questions to better understand what students are telling us.
For example, I mean, I know I've had multiple people reach out to me saying they're frustrated because we don't have lacrosse.
Exactly, and we don't know.
Because we don't have one sport here, it doesn't, you know, not to, not to take anything away from lacrosse.
Yeah, no, and there's the club activity.
But the whole idea being is, is that, yeah, it's a perception question. And I think from a, we're doing good, we're using to make sure the perception is, it sounds like we're attacking that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move into athletics and activities. Here are our participation rates for middle school and high school athletics. And I, I do want to note that when we gather this, these are unduplicated. So if a student participates in one sport, they're counted once. If a student participates in three sports, they're counted once in these results. We gather this based off of what we get from our athletic directors. So you can see there are sports participation over the past three years. This slide shows activities participation. Now, this is a duplicated count. So if a student is in one club, they get one. If a student's in three clubs, they would be counted three times. We don't have a way to collect it because this one's based off reports from those class advisors. But you can see the number of participants, it's duplicated at middle school and in high school over the past three years.
And I know, but one of the things I didn't see, the, when we're talking about, we'll go, I mean, appendix, I saw the breakdown. On this, is there any way we could, I don't even know if this is possible, but the part of it is, is making sure that, that a diverse socioeconomic group is involved in sports. What I want to make sure is, is that, particularly the kids who may not have a lot of money, be blunt, or are still able to participate in sports. You don't have to be, you don't have to be playing all these club sports all the time to be able to participate in high school sports. I want to make sure that.
Yeah.
That, that.
We do too.
That all of them, and I don't know, I don't know, like I was looking through these, trying to parcel that out.
You will see that in the appendix, participation is lower at some of our more impacted schools. We, it, it's available and we have teams and they are no-cut teams, especially in the middle school. And we have all of those coaches available, so there is a lot of participation at them. You do see more at some of our other schools.
You know, one of the things that's always potentially a barrier is transportation too. And, you know, in, I don't know if, if that's ever happened here in our district, but it's a, it's a cost to like run activity buses and that kind of thing. That's probably something that's happened in the, in the past at some point, not in any recent history. But whereas looking to, are there ways that, you know, we can provide more access? But in a way that, you know, that we can afford, yeah.
And that's, like I said, part of it is, is I want to make sure that our, our, our sports and our other extrapricular activities are accessible to everybody.
Sure.
And I just, that was one of the things I couldn't parcel out from this, I didn't know if we could, if we had a way of doing that. It looks like you guys are thinking about it, although it's quite difficult to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a challenge. Okay, I'm going to keep moving. Some of the actions that schools take to help get kids involved, our incoming freshmen are invited in the spring to Brave Day, Sun's Day, Lion's Day. And there's a lot of promotion of clubs and activities, athletics to get involved the minute you start high school. There's a lot of marketing on our social media, the website, action team for partnerships also, do some outreach at some of the schools as well. We like to celebrate when our teams are doing well and then the younger kids can see that as well. But the one I really want to highlight and that it really speaks the loudest is our coaches and advisors. They, the ones who grow strong programs have built, that build relationships with the students, with the families, they're the ones with the strong programs at the schools and we, we just see it over and over and hear it from our schools.
I have one other question, just because I've, in the past two weeks, I've had a few different families reach out to me. Is there a way that some of these programs that, for example, fall sports, I know some of them are, have, practices is the right word, they've got activities that are going on during.
Clinics and things during the summer.
During the summer and, or doing unofficial, I don't know if they're unofficial practices or what it is. Or for example, they may be running together.
Conditioning and.
Is there a way that, or yeah, conditioning programs? I looked on our website, I couldn't find for the different sports, how to contact your coach or how they find that information out. And, and a couple of parents asked me and I looked, is there a way, how?
Yeah, the quickest is, and the high schools especially, they, their offices open most of the summer. So if they call the school, that's probably going to be the quickest way. And then on a lot of the websites of the schools, there will be a website for the sport as well.
Most of those are still from this.
They're, they're outdated. Okay, yeah.
That's what I saw for a couple of different sports.
Okay, I will follow up on that one.
They just didn't have like a coach, a phone number or a coach or information or.
Yeah, we can follow up on that, thank you.
Thank, thank you, I, I didn't have the answer, so I figured you know much better than I do.
Okay, I wanted to highlight a couple of bright spots in the district. Desert Hills Middle School has 37% of their students participating in at least one sport and 530 participants in clubs and activities. And when Matt Scott talked with Principal Gant, he reported that having coaches in the building has definitely helped recruit kids as well as focusing on building relationships with students on a daily basis to get them excited about being able to represent their school. Our club offerings, it's all about having the leadership of those, the programs that kids want to be associated with. We try to build relationships with kids daily and put staff that are great with kids in those coaching roles. So again, kind of what I mentioned earlier, how important those coaches are. And then at Kamikin, again, 37% of the students participate in at least one sport and almost 950 participants in clubs and activities. And Athletic Director Kyle Cowan reports that we have an abundance of students that come out for sports. Unfortunately, we have to cut some of the kids, so we try to be really good at making sure information's out there for students to register for things and take part in all of the programs. So next steps as far as activities and athletics go is we, over the summer, while we're looking at those, we want to determine if we've got the right key indicators or if they need to be adjusted. And then also can, continue our efforts and strategies to increase participation.
And I'll just speak to the potential key indicator update. Because our indicators are for increasing, you know, one of the things that's kind of a little dissonance is with cut programs, there's only a finite amount of spots in high school sports. And you can see that those numbers maintain pretty consistently over time. So we're just not sure that having a target to increase every year necessarily really makes sense. So we want to take some time and talk about that a little bit more and maybe present to the board a, a better way of, of measuring that.
And with that, I would, I would say, again, the first one, we were talking about perception. I think that's beneficial, but again, a lot of that has to do with perception and maybe perception doesn't actually reflect.
It's one type of data, right?
What we do, it's one data point. So it's, it's not to say it's not beneficial, but, but having other data points like, hey, we do have X number of programs and tracking those kind of things. Thank you for doing it this way, I think it's super helpful.
Oh, good, good, thank you.
I like that. One thing I'd love to add though is, where are we not doing well? Where, where's, we've got bright spots, but maybe spots we're working on. And again, this is not because we're trying to be, to point any.
To be critical.
To be critical, but rather it's to learn. If everything is great, then we're not looking very hard. Because there's always areas for improvement and that's where we can really grow. And so saying, and I'm okay, you know, I, this is, no one should feel like they're in trouble because we say, hey, this is not our best.
We tried something, right?
It's when we look at those areas that we fail, that's when we're going to learn a lot. And so, or maybe not fail, but maybe not even do our best or reach our goals, or however you want to say it. So maybe including those on this is saying, hey, here's this, here's a place where we're struggling still and here's, here's what we're trying to address it, and here's where we're struggling still in our plans. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
How we're not just patting ourselves on the back.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
I don't have any.
Like I said, I shared mine.
Gabe, any comments?
No, thank you Alyssa.
Oh, I, I do have, I mean, I hadn't thought of this, but I, so I didn't send this question. Do we foresee any major changes with budget tightening?
In athletics?
In athletics or, or clubs or anything like that? Are we, are we potentially going to see any big changes in any of those?
Any potential budget with athletics and activities?
It changes, an ASV or?
Anything we foresee changing?
There's no grand changes for the budgets.
I don't see anything, so I want to make sure.
All right, Alyssa, I guess you get to stay up there. School volunteer data.
Okay, here we go, okay. All right, well, good evening, it's nice to join you this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about volunteer data, this is one of our performance indicators. So in tonight's presentation, I'm going to include a review of the community member performance target, results from last year and also actions taken. So we're going to try this out again tonight as far as volunteer data goes. Okay, in our strategic plan goals around community, we have that we want to provide opportunities for community members to come into our schools and volunteer. And so we collect this data through the volunteer application process and those that have been accepted. So you can see for last year, we were a little over 9,000 volunteer applications accepted, which is up quite significantly from the year before.
Great.
Was this comparable, I mean, that, was it comparable with 2019?
I don't know if we had it collected, so I don't think, I don't think it was a goal. Yeah.
We could probably go back into the data and figure it out.
Just, fill in Josh, and so this, this was like one of the things that, I think the whole board is in agreement, but I was really, really pushing us to get, so I don't know that, that's something that we really like track before.
We can see we're doubling, that's awesome. We've doubled.
Yes. And we're going to talk a little bit about that outreach that we've done to work on that. We also want to show it by the number of hours in our elementary schools and in our secondary schools. How, how this was done, at the beginning of the year, there was some training to implement consistent tracking and reporting in our school. So we had consistency of what does it mean to be volunteering? For example, going to a music concert is not volunteering, but helping with a field trip is volunteering. And then those are submitted monthly, so we could keep track throughout the year by school.
And just to highlight, so on the previous slide, that's why we don't have multi-year data, because this is the first year that we are collecting it in a uniform manner.
Not only are we tracking it. Not only are we tracking it more consistently, but we're also being a little more intentional about putting opportunities out there. So some of those opportunities are on the district website, the family hub's been revamped, website on the information, social media posts, these are both at the district level and the school level. And then also celebrating and appreciating our volunteers at the school level and the district level. Team Read Luncheon here is another example. Some different volunteer opportunities are listed. We've heard from some of these in different board presentations throughout the year as well. And then I really wanted to just spend a few minutes highlighting a few of our schools, thinking about opportunities for volunteering and then also outreach these schools are doing to help bring volunteers in. So our first one is Sunset View Elementary, which this year logged two thousand four hundred and forty-six volunteer hours. Opportunities at Sunset View included Team Read. There is a Mustang Market that is volunteer run. It's a student store where they get to spend their Mustang bucks. And the principal sends out weekly updates to families, letting them know how they can help out at Sunset View. One of our other elementary schools that had over thirty-five hundred volunteer hours was Sagecrest Elementary. And at Sagecrest, they've put their ATP and PTO together, so they have the ATPTO, which is a great opportunity to get families involved. There's volunteer opportunities for different events like Jog-a-thon, Field Days, other events. And then Sagecrest has a program called Watch Dogs and DOG stands for Dads of Great Students, where dads are encouraged to volunteer a day in the school. It's a pretty awesome program. Some outreach that they do is making sure the community is actively invited. Families know that they are invited to be coming in to the schools. They want their front office to be welcoming. And then individual classrooms as well as the school requests volunteers. At Park Middle School, we are, we logged one thousand seven hundred and eighty volunteer hours. And Park has a few different programs coming in to support them. They've got some mentoring and lunchtime volunteers to connect with students. Master Gardeners comes in and helps them with the school garden. There's career and financial literacy support that has volunteers coming in to work with different classes and students. And they have an after-school ballet folklorico program that's thriving as well. At Park, they really work to find volunteers. They, they don't wait. They go out and they find them and bring them in to Park Middle School. And lastly, I just wanted to share our, one of our high schools, a bright spot, spot literally are the Southridge Suns with three thousand two hundred and twenty-two volunteer hours. And I think this is a good example, Matt was telling me when we were reviewing this. I think they had like fifty hours last, that having consistent reporting guidelines has been helpful for all of our schools. So some opportunities to volunteer at Southridge are their Fun in the Sun Rewards event. They have a lot of volunteer coaches. They had a lot of volunteers for their senior class party as long, as well as a trip. And they use Parent Square and emails to let families know about different opportunities. So again, next steps are like, for looking at volunteers is to determine if this is the right indicator. But we also want to continue our current efforts and strategies. We also want to share like what's working in our schools with our administrators. And so if something's not working, there's some ideas there for our schools. And then we also want to develop strategies to support schools that have lower volunteer hours. That's all.
As a, you know, just a kind of highlight to the previous point, you know, we're, we look at the, at the data school by school and can see, you know, yeah, yeah. And so of course, we want to highlight the bright spots in, in the, in the presentation. And then we're working to help share best practice across the system and, and good ideas to, you know, lift, lift all the, all the boats. On the, the key indicator for this one, again, as we, you know, start to refine some of these things, the key indicator is expressed as the number of volunteers. What we have is the number of approved applications and we can see that that's grown significantly. And then we collect the number of volunteer hours. So we probably want to refine the key indicator to better align because they're not, it's not really aligned right now. Even though the data's showing, you know, good progress, the indicator's kind of off based on the data we collect.
Another beneficial thing I think would be to add, to add to that, the hours is, I think, helpful, but also including an indicator of hours per, hours per student. So for example, let's just take Sagecrest, for example, they had thirty-five hundred hours. I don't know how many students offhand are in Sagecrest, but let's say you have a school that is significantly, significantly smaller.
Yeah.
You're going to see a significant difference. So, so a way of kind of helping us see, how many hours per student?
Okay.
You know, I think would be a great indicator and how many unique volunteers. So again, I mean, I think some of these programs, I hope we're sharing. I think that, you know, as you're going through like the, for example, the-
Watch Dogs.
The Watch Dogs, where they're, the, the thing I like about that is they're highlighting a specific group of people. At, you know, and you could have a, Mogs doesn't really work, but-
Or Watch Grandpas or whatever, right?
And really trying to get the people, the families in to participate with their, with their, their, their child.
Yeah.
Whether it's parents, grandparents, but looking at, at getting them involved because as we've talked before, I think it makes a huge difference in outcomes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you mentioned, you mentioned that Park kind of like was, I don't know what word you used, like aggressively looking.
Actively.
Actively looking. I mean, Sagecrest does that too.
Yeah, they do.
My daughter goes to Sagecrest and I've been, I've been a watchdog a number of times. And, and they like make you feel like a celebrity kind of for a day and the kids are like cheering you on, give you high fives. And you're like, wow, I'm cooler than I really am, you know, because, so they really did a good job at, like promoting to, to the kids. This is something they kind of feedback. Also, they do a really good job of like, of like selling the, like just selling these ideas through the kids. You know, like my kids come home and they're like, Dad, I gotta go to this thing. Like I have to, you have to come with me. And, and, you know, and so I think that that is, they just do a really good job of that. And so that might be some feedback taken back to other schools is like, sell it to the kids and make the kids excited. So the kids like drag their parents there and, and that's a really good way to give them the schools. We want, we want parents in the schools.
Now with that, I did notice there were a couple of schools that had maybe significant disparity. And it could be a recording issue, it could be a number of issues. But I suspect that some of it may be, these are socioeconomic area that are, makes it more difficult for parents to volunteer because often they're from single parent homes or from homes with both parents maybe working. And maybe if we can look for ideas of somehow perhaps providing opportunities for people that are not in, in that school.
Like how we define involvement or?
Well, and even looking for ways to draw people across boundaries. So just because my kid goes to Cottonwood doesn't mean I can't go volunteer at East Gate.
Right.
And maybe even trying to encourage parents because I think it also helps our community better understand the needs. We talked about the levy earlier, better understand the needs of the school district. And particularly in some of these areas, you know, if you go to some of our schools, you may say, oh man, we've got all this stuff. And they may not appreciate where some of the money from the levies go and how beneficial that is. And so maybe helping them volunteer.
And we have talked about that a lot. And yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it'd be really cool to have like a grandma and grandpa program. You know, they're just like, they're not attached to any school, just, just kind of grandma and grandpa group, you know, that goes and spreads around. And that'd be really cool.
And we, not quite that, but like, you know, we've got some Kiwanis and Rotary groups who have really adopted schools. And Amistad's a great example.
East Gate.
Yeah.
And looking at ways-
Churches that have really adopted schools.
Really incorporate them more because as I look in the, you know, as we go to the appendix, which I really appreciate the data here, you can see there, there's some significant disparity between these and try to mitigate some of that disparity by, by filling in the, maybe filling in the overflow in those gaps.
For sure.
Because I think we'll, again, I think we'll see more, better results when kids see that other people care about them.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
I have a quick-
Gabe? Yeah, Gabe?
I, first off, I love the fact that we're doubling the number of volunteers in our schools. That if, if, if I'm guessing right, nine thousand volunteer applications approved, that's about one for every two students in our district, I think roughly. With that being said, are we comfortable and have we reevaluated our application process and screening? Obviously, as we grow in volunteers, we want to make sure that, you know, we're approving the right, right applicants and, and keeping everybody safe and all that stuff. So have we just reevaluated that or relooked at it just to ensure we feel good with really that process and any background checking or anything like that, just to ensure we're doing our due diligence?
Yes, we have. It's something we continually look at and, you know, and the, the background checks are really important and they're conducted. And, you know, there's also policies and rules and procedures around what volun, you know, volunteers not being left alone with students and those kinds of things. So kind of the scope and scale of what, of what volunteers do in our schools is the other piece of that in addition to the good screening policies and practices that we have in place.
Awesome. Yep, I just, as we scale and we grow and we bring more people in, I just want to make sure we're-
Absolutely. Got it. We want to keep our kids safe.
Yep.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Alyssa, for double.
Oh, I'll be back.
Yes, you will. Don't, yeah, I guess you're right. Don't go too far. All right, Robin and our Get to Know KSD interview report.
As Robin's pulling up her presentation, I just want to highlight that hers is not in quite the same format because it's not really tied to real specific indicators. It's more of a, of an annual update. But you will see some connection. Alyssa mentioned Family Hub and some of those things. And Robin's going to delve into that a little bit more in her presentation.
Yeah, our areas cross over quite a bit.
Absolutely.
So I am here to give you a report about Get to Know KSD. As you may or may not know, this program has evolved over the years. It has gone from an in-person full-day event to an online event and now has evolved into information resources online for families.
And, and Robin, I, I'm sorry to do this, but I just want, for the benefit of Josh, I just want to explain that real, real quick. So at one point in time, there was a Get to Know KSD event that was a one-day event held during the day. And there were some like different-
Breakout sessions.
Sessions that people would rotate and attend. Based on the data, it, because it's happening during the day when families are working, we weren't really reaching very many families and we were not reaching all the demographic of families that we know were so important. And so we, we initially thought we would expand to some evening events. COVID hit. We shifted to online kinds of webinars and those kinds of things. And then based on the data we've been collecting and presenting over the past several years, the, last year when we had it during the evening, nobody came. I would say, like, we had a board, one of our board members, Diane, would come to everyone and it was basically Diane and maybe one other person. And so that was like, okay, this data's showing that this isn't an effective model, which is what led to what we're currently doing.
Right. So this is, as Tracy said, for review. I'm hoping that you'll have some maybe feedbacks or, or ideas at the end of the presentation. So this falls under the goal that all families are key partners. And then specifically, we want to expand family education through the Get to Know KSD online information sessions and trainings and modules that are on our website. The idea here is to build out our Family Hub. So that's a newer section on our website where we're trying to engage families and lead them through how to get the information that they're looking for and that they need for their students. So one, the first strategy is to develop online training resources. We received feedback in our family engagement survey. I've also been working closely with the family engagement team to identify areas and that we could create short videos on how to, how a parent might, you know, check their grades or something like that. So there's this kind of tips and, and tools section we're calling Connect with KSD. And then there is the online parent information education sessions that are more about the programs that are within the KSD. And that is, those are called Get to Know KSD. So a timeline of the work that we've done this year, in the fall, we presented a conceptual framework and identified some topics that we thought would be good. And then we audited, reorganized the current resources. We, there are some videos that are already out there with our learning, with our online partners and the tools that we use. So we incorporated those. In the winter, we created video content for volunteering and I'm sure you're familiar with the new language access law. So we wanted to make sure that we had resources for families that speak primarily Spanish. And then in the spring, we created more content for regarding online safety, AI. We have a little video on that. Also graduation requirement updates, reading and math. And specifically for these, we've created a focus level at the K three level for the math and reading. So this is what the Family Hub looks like if you were going to access it on your phone. The focus areas for the video, one is volunteering. So just what is the application process here in Kennewick School District? And how, what are the opportunities to get involved for families or community members? And so we lead viewers through that, those options and just to get them interested and get them started. And then language access, there's a few different areas we addressed in that. Parent Square, how to change your language preferences so you receive your communication in any language that you choose. Accessing the website in a different language, so you can select Spanish from any page on our website and it will change the text. And then how to get language assistance in Spanish. So, and that really touches on communicating with your school to make sure that they know that you prefer to receive your information in Spanish. And then other focus areas were online safety. So we talked about some basic safety things that parents can do if they're not familiar with parent controls and, you know, that that would be something that you'd want to utilize and get set up. And then also technology tools and understanding AI and its impact on students. And then high school graduation updates and then the reading and the math program. So this is kind of what it looks like now. It's still, I think, a work in progress. I'm hoping to make it more visually kind of appealing. And then we're also just really continuing to look at the areas that we can build out and look at what other school districts are doing in regards to parent education and parent academy type approaches that are really similar to this. So that is, that's what we're looking at. Let's see. And there, in terms of getting the information out, now that we have these tools, we can look at really pushing out the information during back-to-school time and through our district e-news and our social media. And then, of course, promoting it on our website. Do you have any questions?
I do have a couple.
Okay.
So just to, to, I don't know if they're really questions, but two things. One is, and I don't know if this, I almost could have asked the same question in the last, the last presentation to this one, but like finding teachers or admins sometimes on the website is, is, is tough. I know you can go to each school and then you can, but like just the, the, being able to sort them, not, them not having, not all of my pictures. From a district level, just trying to like, I, there's a teacher, I don't know what school this teacher goes to, you know, trying to find that. Just like that whole process of trying to find different teachers and sorting and admin and staff and stuff. It is, I, I've actually had trouble just going through and finding, so I don't know who that really fits. Is that probably more you, I guess, but?
Yeah, and it's something, just so you know, that we continually talk about. And the solution really is going to rely on our technology.
Yeah, for sure.
How our technology- Uh, how our technology connects to our employee database.
Yeah, pictures is really, really nice, too.
And we have allowed our schools to make the choice as a team whether or not to have a picture or just a name.
Well, I like the pictures for the, for the record, it's definitely helpful.
But I, I love, like, bringing, you know, reconsidering.
Yeah, for sure. Um, and the, but the, the suggestion I would make is, is like, kind of, um, I, I don't know what it would take to pull this off, but like, more fun social media, like, rea- rea- the, the, the type of social media that kids look at these days with reels and shorts and stuff, um, these short, like, kind of funny, engaging videos that I think, I don't know what it would take to pull that off and I don't want to hire some huge team to do it really, but like, that.
Are you, are you saying an audience for students or for parents?
Um, for both, really. I mean, I just, I mean, certainly for students, but for, for, for both. I mean, I, I just, just more, just more fun, short videos, uh, uh, and, and that kind of stuff, like reels and, and shorts and, um, and add little bits of the stories that are just kind of more fun, engaging, that people are looking forward to, to watching and maybe sharing and, and, yeah.
Little clips of, I, I'm hearing, you know, little clips of sporting events, is that kind of thing, or little clips of.
Yeah, or student, or students like, yeah. Or, or the students like, doing a little fun, a little skit or something that, that promotes something or, um, y- you know, I mean, you, you, our social media is great, it's, 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 it's very informative for sure. Uh, I think that maybe the, the fun side of it could be, could be picked up a bit, you know, and, and that, that, I know that, that, that potentially takes a tremendous amount of effort and energy and, and acting and thinking through and I, I absolutely recognize that. But, uh, I just think that that would be something that would connect with families and, and younger families and kids and everybody, this, in this day and age.
Thank you for the feedback.
Um, a couple of things. I'm, on Family Hub, I, I think the videos, the fact that we're adding videos is awesome. One, a couple of suggestions, and again, is I think sometimes it's helpful if, when you pull up to a webpage, for example, the Family Hub, if you have a little video there, it just explains the Family Hub.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I love that.
In today's society, a lot of times people don't like to look or be, but if they have something that will just give them a fifteen-second, hey, here's what's going on, here's where you find stuff. Because, for example, you've got, on the quick links, you've got Power School and then I think in another area, you've got Power School, um, and then in the videos, you have Power School. But if, I don't know what Power School is.
Great.
Or, or like, for example, on the quick link, it's actually just the link to Power School. So if you don't even know it, if you're trying to figure out things, it doesn't ever tell you like, hey, this is what Power School is. You may be familiar with it, you may not.
There's your resource, yeah.
Here's, here's some, here's some resources to look at. Again, little fifteen, twenty-second videos, um, that help people, help parents who maybe, I guess the way I look at it again, let's go to the lowest common denominator here, people who maybe have no idea what Power School is or no idea what Parent Square is or Student Square is. They have no idea how to look at their kids' grades online.
And, and then like, maybe like, how to, you know, you, you, like you say, you click on Power, you click on the Power School link and it takes you to Power, and I'm like, I don't know what my username and password is, like.
Well, and that's.
Yeah, how do I, how do I find that? You know, like.
And, and so having a little video there that can help give them an overview will help, again, to me, the Family Hub is trying to increase access of parents and, and helping them answer their questions in simple fashions. It, it saves staff having to answer phone calls, you know, like we were talking about how to reach it, reach different coaches. If, if there's an easy way, so parents don't have to call the adminis-, you know, the, each building and they're getting twenty phone calls a day asking the same questions. It saves everybody time. And, and again, in, in today's world, the short videos are, are often more of a driver than, than reading things.
It's certainly a great, like, a really good idea. I feel like the Family Hub's a good idea, it's a really good start and, and, yeah, and yeah, I, I think that maybe like, a little bit of how-to stuff of what is and little videos and, you know.
And, and.
You even mentioned like.
I think the possibilities are endless.
The possibilities are great here. And really, the core is, is, at its core, what we're trying to do is going to, you know, what is, what is the overarching goal is, is we want parent involvement. Now, we want parents to be involved and to be involved, they have to understand things and how the district works. And you guys are doing a great job of creating something, we just need to make it really easily accessible and, and again.
Understandable, so, yeah.
Have it, have ways for people who know nothing to get up to speed fairly quickly. And, and then I would also say, a- as you're talking about, publicizing Family Hub. Because, again, if people don't know about it, we have a great resource, but then it won't be used.
Yeah, a cool, a cool family could like, be there and like, talk about, hey, this is, Family Hub does for me, or whatever, and then you have the whole video.
And again, it, you got back-to-school stuff, I mean, I think this should be on the front page of when we send families, hey, welcome back to school. Family Hub is your place to go. When you have questions, go to the Family Hub. When you have, uh, you know, when you have questions about your sports, go to the Family Hub. We can help make that the place where parents know they can go to find their answers.
Great feedback, thank you.
And I, I mean, I, you, we're doing great. It's, it's a great start.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin.
Gabe?
Gabe?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
I forgot you, so don't speak for yourself. Um, okay.
Alyssa's back.
She's back. Curriculum adoption cycle.
So one of our objectives this year was to look at our adoption cycle and see if it needed to have some restructuring of timelines and process. So I'm gonna share a little background tonight, um, and then I've also got an update and a recommendation moving ahead that I want to share. Um, so one of our strategic plan objectives was to look at our, um, uh, adoption cycle and I'm gonna share a little information tonight, like some background and some rationale, what it, what our cycle currently is and why we want to propose an updated cycle. Um, so we do have policy and our policy language does have in it that we'll have a regular cycle to review, revise, develop and adopt, um, all major curriculum, um, for us. Um, and when I say curriculum in these senses, I'm talking about instructional materials. Um, and I, I just want to take a minute, um, as a district, we want to make sure our teachers and our students have high-quality materials, um, to work from. We also want to work on having district-wide adoptions. That way our teachers can collaborate, we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum in all of our schools, and we can also use, uh, better resources for training. We want to make sure we're fiscally responsible, um, that we can share, um, and, um, across buildings when enrollment shifts. Um, and then we are starting to leverage the use of open educational resources. I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. And then the, one of the big ones we wanted to consider in an updated adoption cycle was differentiating between equipment and instructional materials for art, uh, music and PE. Um, so real quickly, on, um, open educational resources or another acronym, OER. Um, these are, um, teacher and research materials that have been created and they reside in the public domain, or they may be under copyright that have been released under an open license. So there's a no-cost access to use them. They've been vetted as well, um, and can be used in classrooms and they're, they're aligned to standards. Um, Washington State has a OER hub, um, with some resources, um, available and it is a growing form of, um, having materials. Uh, I wanted to talk about differentiating between instructional materials and equipment. So when I say instructional materials for PE, for example, not health, but for PE, we do have a curriculum right now, um, for, uh, teaching PE at all the levels. And then also, we have music, um, instructional materials as well. When, uh, we talk about equipment, um, those are things like weight racks, elliptical machines or instruments for music, um, art supplies as well, or not supplies, but, um, equipment for kilns, pottery wheels. So that's the slight, um, difference between the two. In, um, in our current adoption cycle, um, when art, health, P, um, and PE, music happened before, equipment happened at the same time. And we're running into some challenges of doing that. So in our current, this is our current adoption cycle, um, and Micah may remember and Gabe may remember, um, in, uh, January, about eighteen months ago, we moved math. It was going to be up here, so this would be really pretty in a nice visual fashion, but we moved K5 math up for a couple of reasons. We weren't happy with results and we had access to ESAR dollars if we moved that K5 math adoption up. Um, so we, we moved that one. Before that, we had to move health because of some new, um, legislature and what needed to be taught in comprehensive sexual health education. Um, we have, um, in dual language six-eight, we've got some work going on this year as well. And what's happened is we've, haven't found the materials that we need and we're looking at OER for dual.
Just really quick, and I, I was wanting to, didn't want to interrupt too much, but I, I wanted to go back to the point you made before. So up to this point, equipment and, um, and materials were viewed as a group? So every eight years, we'd be repla-, we'd be look at replacing.
Well, in the previous arts adoption, yeah, and the previous performing arts, instruments were included.
So, so if, let's say we ran out of cellos because they got broken at year five, what would we do?
Uh, we're gonna, we do have some replacement budget built in.
There was some repair and replacement, um, budget, um.
They need to be replaced.
To augment that.
Yeah.
And, and so what this does is really recognizes that, like, it doesn't make sense to convey that we're only gonna, you know, get, get new, um, instruments every ten years or something.
Yeah, we're not gonna say you have to wait.
This is about instructional materials. We have an ongoing annual cycle.
Okay, because that's what I've.
For other equipment.
From before, we had talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Several months ago, when we were talking about musical equipment and stuff. Okay, so.
Got it.
So we're, we wanna kind of move ahead and formalize it a little bit.
Got it, that makes more sense, I think.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, so moving ahead, um, I've highlighted some changes and then also at the top, this is for instructional materials. We're gonna talk about a replace, repair, um, uh, annual cycle for equipment in a minute. Um, but I've highlighted in yellow, our six-eight dual language, they are in the process of creating their own units, um, and they, they're working together, um, with the teachers. They were here for two days just now. Um, it's guided, um, and they're really excited about this to make sure that they have what they need to teach dual language in middle school because they can't find it. Um, the other one I want to mention is in K5 ELA, um, the materials are gonna sunset that we're currently using, called Journeys, is sunsetting in twenty-four, twenty-five. We, we will not have access to any of the digital, um, after the end of next school year. But on our current cycle, we're not supposed to get new materials for another couple of years. So we, we really need to move K5 ELA up, um, and we also aren't happy with our results. Uh, we need to have updated materials, um, for our literacy instruction in K5 ELA.
And can I pause just a second, not to get too far into this, but just to let you know that, um, Alyssa and Vic and I, um, and others have spent lots and lots of time, uh, going through subscription, um.
Mostly.
Costs and, uh, when things, um.
Expire.
Expire, thank you, um, to put together the cycle that works with the budget. So, um, that didn't get touched on too much during the budget presentation, but I just want to assure you that these things are aligned.
So what happened on this one? I mean, I know nobody was here eight years ago when we did the K5 ELA.
Well, we, we're an eight-year adoption cycle and we've moved to a ten-year.
Got it.
And so we've got some unintended comp-, um.
Consequences.
Consequences of eight years of. Yes, and that some of the other renewals in, um, six-twelve math and six-twelve science, they're gonna be expiring in a couple of years and we have worked to get them back on track this year.
Got it.
Everything's lining up.
So everything's, so we, we managed the, the downstream already, this is one of the few areas that we didn't, we weren't able to change and, and maybe didn't want to.
Um, yeah, I would, I would agree with that and I, I think it's a good segue into the next slide is we, we need to look at needs-based, uh, when we're looking at adoption, not just, um, a fixed cycle, like, we're up and we get things, we need to look and see what we need. Uh, we had to do that with health, we did that with math, we're looking at that with K5 ELA right now as well. And we mentioned the digital subscriptions. Uh, we also want to leave some space in there for OER. I think there's some potential in some other areas in a couple of years as we get used to this. And as AI gets a little more sophisticated, um, I think this is an opportunity for us. And then in the new adoption cycle, we want to, um, really make sure we call out that we want to separate instructional materials and equipment. Um, but we have a plan for the equipment as well. Um, so with things related to equipment for art, music and PE, we do have an annual repair, replace, um, budget allocated for those. Um, we need to make sure we have up-to-date, um, inventory and we review those and that we're working with our teachers in our buildings to make sure we're keeping, um, our instruments, our equipment, uh, um, clean and repaired, taking good care of it. We have a process for submitting for repairs and replacement and there's someone who oversees that for the district. And then we also need to work with our buildings, so there's guidelines on what we can do so we can make sure we have the best equipment possible for as long as possible. So with that, I'd like to recommend, and we can talk a little more as well or answer questions, I'd like to, uh, recommend that the board approve the proposed adoption cycle as presented.
Okay. Um, like to entertain a motion to approve the adoption cycle.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, curriculum adoption cycle as presented.
Is there any discussion? Gabe, do you have any discussion on this?
Y- yeah, uh, Alyssa or, or Dr. Pierce, remind me, the, the curriculum budget, is that partly filled with levy funds? Because I know we paused it when we had the double levy failure, but.
Yes, it is.
Mm-hmm. And you, on one of the adoption slides, you can see where we actually paused, um, some of the adoptions because of that.
Okay.
What is that?
Can you go to the, can you go to the slide with the proposed one up there? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make that, I just wanted to highlight that point and just, again, make it apparent, um, you know, to the community, like, we've got, we've got work we need to do when it comes to new curriculums and updates and those kind of things and, um, you know, we're, we're on certain cycles for these materials and, you know, we're asking lots of questions, we're finding the, the, the best that we can out there and we're, we're looking to make our students successful. So again, just another piece of the, the pie that, you know, down the road, the community, we're gonna be, we're gonna be needing your help again.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? All right, I guess we're ready for the roll call votes.
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Next up is Dr. Pierce.
So there's two more items, uh, for new business this evening. One is a very important, uh, policy, thirty-four nineteen, self-administration of asthma and anaphylaxis medications. Uh, this is a, uh, was the model policy, um, it's an essential policy. Uh, currently, there's a law, uh, that we do follow, uh, assuring that students are afforded the opportunity to self-administer prescribed medications. Most of this wording is almost verbatim from what is in law. So while we're, it's reflected in our current practice, we don't have this codified in, in a policy and we believe it's important to have it codified in policy. So, uh, again, it, uh, allows students, um, whose healthcare provider. So, again, it allows students whose healthcare provider has provided a written treatment plan to self-administer asthma, you know, inhalers and so forth, and nurses assure that students are competent to possess and self-administer that prescribed medication during school hours and at school-sponsored events. So this is a policy we are recommending tonight for board approval.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve policy 3419.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 3419, self-administration of asthma and anaphylaxis medications as presented.
For first and second, yeah, okay. Thank you, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, Dr. Pierce, so is this what you're, what you're saying is, if a student has asthma, a doctor says they can have their inhaler and then they have to go show the school nurse that they know how to use it, and then they can carry it and use it as needed?
That's correct. So, yeah, the student's parent or guardian submits a written request, and any other documentation, we've got procedure language developed, but that's essentially what, exactly what you said, the healthcare provider has prescribed it, it's part of a written treatment plan, the nurse assures that the student's competent to possess it, and the student's been allowed to carry and administer. This, again, is current practice, the law says this already, we just don't currently have this codified in board policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. Any further discussion? Take a roll call vote, Patty.
All right, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up.
Excellent, thank you. Last new business item is.
Student board representative.
Student board representatives. So, let me just get this started here. We all know that Annie Maltoos has been the representative-elect and will be the 24-25 student board representative next year. Of course, the student reps are not here this evening, they start with us in September, but just wanted to highlight that Annie is our student board rep for next year, and you can see on the screen a little bit about Annie's participation in school, and she's really excited to step into the role of board rep. That means the board rep-elect position needed to be filled, and Mr. Valentine and Ms. Gladhill, together with Matt Scott and I, interviewed students who had submitted applications and are recommending unanimously to the board that Diego Anguiano from Comanche High School be appointed the board's 24-25 student board representative-elect. He'll serve in that role for next year and then step into the student board rep role the following year. And here's a little bit about Diego and his various achievements and areas of participation, all shown on the slide in front of you. So the recommendation is that the board appoints Diego Anguiano as the 24-25 student board representative-elect.
Do we, and do we do a motion on this as well? Yes, okay. I'll entertain a, entertain a motion.
You do it.
Gabe, would you like to?
Yeah, I will make a motion that the board appoints Diego Anguiano as a 24-25 student board representative-elect.
All right, any further, any discussion?
I just, just real quick, and I know we had some feedback from Mallory and all that stuff, I think it's probably worth a further discussion, just the whole student board rep process and what they're doing, I'd like to maybe iron that out a little bit more, so, you know, as Diego comes in, maybe he finds value in being the representative-elect, and we just do things to engage them as well. So I think just down the road, maybe we converse about that.
I would agree, yeah, I would agree, I think everybody, yeah.
I understand, it's evolving.
Mm-hmm.
It's an evolving role that we haven't quite.
I don't feel like it's perfect yet, I mean, it's still kind of a work in progress, but, yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't know if we really provided Annie as clear and defined.
Role, yeah.
Roles.
Yeah, and board remembers, last year was the first year, right?
As I'm saying, it's.
Of a rep-elect, and so.
We're still working on trying to figure out.
Yeah.
How to utilize them.
Even the rep, even the rep, yeah. Okay, any further discussion? No? Take a roll call vote.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, we look forward to having the students with us in September.
September, okay. Next up is we have, our, our next meeting is consent items only and the board will be remote. I do.
Staff will be here in case anyone wants to come in person.
Oh, yes, staff is very dedicated. Alyssa, that was Alyssa, she was like dying to be here again. She, she actually asked to, she actually asked to do a presentation and we told her no. Okay, Tracy, I don't know what this means, I see this A here, it's alternate, what's that?
So there's a consent item that will be on the next meeting agenda, because it's consent items only, but one consent item is the Alternative Learning Experience or ALE Annual Report.
Okay, okay. And, and one more question I have in regard to a consent item that was pulled off, the consent item was, there was a book, did we pull off?
Right, and the board at the meeting or retreat, I'm trying to remember now, said it would come back in the fall.
Yeah, well, the, the issue was, is the course that it was going to be used for didn't fill, so they're not doing the course anyway. So it's, maybe it's a bit of.
Or it'll come back in the future at some point, potentially, but, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I can't remember if we talked about that at the last business meeting or it came up at the.
I think it was at the retreat.
Retreat, okay.
Okay, all right.
You know, just talk about it, just, that's the budget resolution that I'm handing you.
Gotcha. And the other, other business, I gotta say, other business authorized by law? No? Okay. Oh, hold on, this meeting is adjourned.